I will call the meeting to order. Just so everyone knows, we started off our meeting with an executive session. That's why we're starting a little later. I would ask you to join me if you're able to stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us, anyone. Again, for those streaming in, you can put your questions as we go along in the chat. First item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the school committee. Does any member of the school committee have anything they wish to bring up? Seeing no one. Then I will turn it over to our MEA co-presidents. Welcome, Sam, our co-president. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Kate couldn't make it today, so I'm going solo. Again, we don't have a lot that we wanted to present tonight, other than like the elementary schools just completed parent-teacher conferences before Thanksgiving. Currently, they're working on report cards for the end of the first trimester, which will be available next week. And the parent-teacher conferences at the high school level are scheduled for Wednesday, December 15th. And that's pretty much it. Good.
Any questions for Sam? Sam, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I would point out that we will begin negotiations with the union on the 14th of December. You will see, in the community, you will see lots of budget negotiation subcommittee. All the negotiation sessions are in executive session, just so everyone knows that. But we were going to start with the teachers' union, and we have several, we have to do all our unions by essentially the end of the year. And we've been able to complete that in the past, and we look forward to that. So I just wanted the town to know that. And then I'll turn it over to our student rep Natalia. Natalia, welcome.
So for this week, for the MECC, it is book fair time at the MECC. They have had a family visit evening and classroom visits this week. It is great to see the students so excited about books. Thanks to the PTA, the building has also been decorated for winter and the holidays. For HBB, HBB is hosting the Holiday Shop Book Fair again this year so that kids can get a chance to shop for gifts while also visiting the book fair. The Holiday Shop will be held on December 7th and 8th from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. And on December 9th, both the book fair and the Holiday Shop will be open from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. They also have the Scholastic Book Fair scheduled for December 7th through 9th. STEM Week is scheduled for the week of December 20th through the 23rd, and they are excited to announce that they are bringing back Jay Manquita from Playful Engineers again this year. Lastly, they will once again be hosting their annual sing-along for students on December 22nd. For Nichols Middle School, this past Saturday, NMS was represented in their annual Christmas parade. There was students from the Builders Club led by Scott Redpath on a float with the High School Key Club. They also had their student council led by Mr. Finch and Ms. Shobel, who decorated a float titled Together Again, and the student council won third place. In addition, the Nichols Middle School marching band led by Mrs. Thornton received the James Loops Judges Award. Congratulations to all the NMS students who participated in the Christmas parade this past weekend. Winter sports began on Monday, November 29th. Tryouts for boys and girls basketball teams are taking place this week. The entire school recently participated in creating their own vision board based on the TIGER acronym. The grand prize winner went to Mrs. Anderson's 7th grade homeroom. Thank you to everyone for your participation. This Saturday, December 4th, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m., the NMS PTA will be collecting donated items to go to savers. The funds raised will help support field trips for NMS. Please support this great cause by donating unwanted clothes and household textiles. The goal is to collect 278 bags. And lastly, for MHS, last Monday, November 22nd, the annual Powderpuff Football Game took place. Congrats to the class of 2022 for winning the game and becoming an undefeated team. The first-ever Turkey Games put on by MHS Student Council had a great turnout. We are excited to keep the Class Cup competition going. Key Club will be hosting their annual community dinner to raise money for local families' heating bills on Wednesday, December 8th. This event will take place in the Middleborough High School Student Commons and is a pasta dinner catered by Lorenzos. There are two seatings at 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. The last chance to preorder tickets is tomorrow, and the cost for these will be $10 for adults and $5 for kids. Tickets at the door will cost $12 for adults and $7 for kids. Please bring cash to Mr. Reynolds in the English Department or email his school account to reserve your tickets. Masks will be required at this event. The class of 2023 is hosting their annual Gingerbread House fundraiser this week. Orders must be placed no later than Monday, December 6, 2021. Order forms can be found in the main office. Anyone interested in joining Key Club meetings are on Wednesdays at 2:00 p.m. in C149. Anyone interested can attend the GSA meetings in C158 also on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Yes Club meetings are also held on Wednesdays at 2:00 p.m. in room C159. Please see Mr. Harris or Ms. McGurk with any questions. The members of the National Honor Society are offering a program to all students in all classes allowing for weekly meetings with a one-on-one tutor. This is a free tutoring opportunity, and please reach out to Mr. Goldman if you are interested.
Does anyone have any questions for Natalia? Natalia, how are applications to colleges going?
They're all done. Now I'm just waiting.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Natalia. With that, I will turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, and folks in the audience. Thanks for coming out. I just have some community updates and some school updates for folks. Just a little bit of history here and community data. On November 16th, in the town of Middleborough, the community of Middleborough, there were 85 cases positive. November 18th, 112. November 22nd, 80. November 24th, 105. November 28th, 90. And as of today, December 2nd, there were 115 cases. So trending up a little bit, but a little up and down also. Current positivity rate in our community has gone from 0.04, I believe, last two weeks ago, to 0.07 in our community, so that is going up. There's no doubt about it. As far as our school department goes, if you looked at the COVID dashboard last week as of November 23rd, there were 31 active positive cases in the district. And as of today, there were 35. So we're definitely trending up a little bit. It's not a number that's, that's great. Would rather have it, as I've said before, at zero. But the test and stay is, is working, and we are keeping kids in school. And those that test positive do are sent home. So that's the latest on COVID positives in the community, in the school community and the community in general. If anybody's got any questions on that. If not, I will move on. Tonight, we have a special guest. Kaitlin McSweeney is the current coordinator for Plymouth Area Prevention Coalition, Collaborative, excuse me. And we have a group of locals that are called Middleborough Matters, a very active group. They work with the high school student population, middle school student population. They're a group of community members and police officers and folks in the, in the school community that work together with Kaitlin. Kaitlin coordinates that group. Part of what she does is last year, we came before you and asked you for permission to complete a survey with our students. And she is here tonight. We asked also at the time that when the results came out, that they were reported to the school committee. This is that report. So she is here tonight, so welcome, Kaitlin. And feel free to introduce yourself and then talk about what you're going to present tonight, and thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having me. Again, my name's Kaitlin McSweeney, and I am the program coordinator for the Plymouth Area Prevention Collaborative, which is a regional group that encompasses the Middleborough, Plymouth, Carver, and Wareham communities focused on youth substance use prevention. So as Superintendent Lynch mentioned, I'm going to be sharing our survey data that we collected last winter in February to March 2021 and sharing those results with you all, particularly we have the, the added questions around COVID as well. So looking forward to sharing it with you all. So overall, we had 828 surveys completed. At the middle school level, we had around 20% of the student body participate, and 10 to 18% at the high school, as you can see, represented here. And I'll go into more details on how each grade answered related to each of the questions. I believe you all have a copy of this as well. Yeah?
As did the chair. It says 163 students participated, that's 20%. That's 20% of the entire population that took the survey, correct? That's not 20% of the sixth grade.
That's a great question. Let me check my notes.
That, that would be the case. That, that is actually representative of much higher than 20% of the sixth grade. So I think that if you add all those together, that is the percentage of the actual total number of surveys that you have represented on that, on that page.
Yep, sorry. Yes, that's accurate. Our evaluation team put this together, and that, that sounds accurate. Usually, if, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that for, for the folks at home who might be watching and, and look at that and say, hey, that's, that's 20%? We don't have that many sixth graders.
Right, right. Thank you for, thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
So going into the middle school data, 30-day use summary. So this question asks about the various substances and their use in the past 30 days. So it goes through here. The dark blue is sixth grade, the medium blue is seventh grade, and that gray-blue is eighth grade. So a few students in sixth through eighth grade used any of the substance listed. Vaping was the substance reported with the most use, with 3% of seventh-grade respondents reporting vaping at least once in the past 30 days. So you can see that trend. They're all under that like 3% mark, so not too much reported use for 30 days by middle schoolers. And then you go into the high school, and you can see that change. So we saw a consistent increase throughout the high school grades, with 7% of ninth-grade respondents reporting drinking in the past 30 days, use of alcohol, and then increasing to 19% of 11th-grade respondents. And then looking even further at the 12th grade, so 26% of the 12th grade respondents reported to use alcohol. And then vaping and marijuana has a steady increase with the 21% of 12th grade students, which are now graduated since this was seniors last year, reporting using both vaping and So this question asks the perception of risk of using these substances by an individual. So folks responding, students in each grade think that using substances regularly poses a moderate or great risk to their health. You can see that the perception of risk for using substances remained consistent or increased as the grade level increased. For example, 56% of the sixth-grade respondents reported drinking alcohol regularly posed a risk to their, their health, and the perception of risk increased to 65% of eighth-grade respondents. So overall, you can see that middle schoolers do have an understanding that substances do pose a harm on their health. And then looking at the high school level data, you can see that the perception of risk for using marijuana and drinking alcohol both decreased as grades levels increased. So they start higher in the percentages per substance and then continue to go down. For example, 51% of the ninth-grade respondents felt that there was moderate or great risk in regularly using marijuana, with the percentage decreasing to 39% of the 11th-grade respondents and only 35% of 12th-grade respondents. So marijuana seems to be the substance that has the least perception of risk. With alcohol, it drops to that 53% for 12th graders. So as grade level increases, those perception of risks seem to be decreasing. Looking at the middle school parental disapproval, so this question aims to, if parent, how their parents perceive risk of using substances. So this percentage shows that students in each grade reported their parents using substances wrong or very wrong. So these parental disapproval rates reported by students from all grades in middle school are high for all substances, meaning that there, there no, there wasn't a substance that had a parental disapproval rate lower than 89%. So meaning that out of the middle schoolers that took the survey, their parents disapprove of using substances by. So looking at the high school level, you can see kind of that difference similarly with the health. The parental disapproval gets lower as the grades go higher for some of the substances. So the reported parental disapproval rates remains high for high school students. Marijuana has the lowest, with rating of 12th-grade respondents with only 68% of the 12th-grade respondents stating that their parents felt using marijuana was wrong or very wrong. And then 85% of 12th-grade respondents stated their parents felt vaping was wrong or very wrong. And then 86% of the respondents stated that parents felt drinking or alcohol was wrong or very wrong. So prescription drugs continues to stay really high of disapproval rates, similarly for alcohol, and then the lowest one there being vaping. And then at the middle school level for peer disapproval, this question asks, students in each grade report that their peers think using substances are wrong or very wrong. So you can see, looking at this chart, 78% of or more students throughout middle, the middle school grades reported that their friends would think it was wrong or very wrong if they used any of the substances. And then as the grade level increased, peer disapproval rates decreased. So you can see that, that's around that like 75 to 78% with vaping and alcohol and marijuana, those peer disapproval rates go down for eighth grade. And then looking at high school peer disapproval, prescription drugs again remains at the, on the higher end, and then looking at the rest of the substances continues to go down. So even this one was interesting, that cigarettes had a lower peer disapproval rate in comparison to some of those being in like the 90 percentage rate on some previous slides. So the pattern of peer disapproval decreases as the grade level increase again in the high school. So 65% of ninth-grade respondents stated their friends would think, think using marijuana was wrong or very wrong, and then decreased to 47% as 11th graders, and then down to 30% for 12th-grade respondents. So vaping and marijuana here, I really wanted to point out because students are, you know, reporting that they don't, their peers don't think it's wrong to use, so like thinking about, you know, peer pressure and things like that. That really stood out to me as, you know, someone who's doing substance use prevention to really focus on those two in particular, even though, you know, we do have funding to talk about vaping, marijuana, and alcohol. I want to keep in mind that that is pretty prominent for the high school. And so these last questions were related to COVID-19 about substance use during the pandemic. So we asked about personal alcohol use increase during COVID-19 across the board. So this has all the grades, it's not broken down by middle and high school. But you can see that, starting in the ninth grade, there is an increase in personal alcohol use reported. And then 8% of ninth-grade students reported an alcohol use that increased summer a lot. And then 13% of 11th-grade students reported an increase. And then 25% of student respondents reported an increase of alcohol use during the COVID pandemic. So here you can see that while a lot of the students reported, no, we're not applicable, there's still those pockets of students that have reported alcohol use increase during COVID-19. And then this asks about personal marijuana use increase during COVID-19. So again, as the grades are higher, those percentages are getting higher of some or a lot. So you can see that in the middle school, it's lower. But starting in ninth grade where people are reporting, reporting student marijuana use increase, and then 7% of the ninth-grade students reported marijuana use increase summer a lot, 21% of 11th graders reporting an increase, and then the 25% of 12th graders responding an increase in marijuana. So coupling those some and a lot together there, you can see that marijuana use has definitely increased by students reporting that during COVID-19. And then lastly, we have the peer use of alcohol increase. So as early as seventh grade, 5% of students reported an increase in alcohol, 6% of eighth grade and nine, and 12% of ninth grade respondents an increase in alcohol. And then 27% of 11th graders had responded an increase in alcohol use, and 41% of 12th grade students reported an increase of peer use of alcohol. So this is asking about their peers, and again, those numbers get higher, particularly 11th and 12th grade. You know, a reported peer of alcohol, alcohol use during the pandemic. So again, wanting to think of, you know, all of the substances that we work with, and in particular, alcohol is increased during, during the COVID pandemic. And then we have the marijuana use. Question here of peer use, you can see that, again, as early as seventh grade, there's 6% of responded an increase. Ninth grade, up to 16%. 11th, 11th grade, there were 30, there was a 33% of student respondents of summer, of using marijuana summer a lot during the pandemic. And then at 12th grade, 46% of 12th grade students responded an increase of peer use during peer, peer use of marijuana. So again, those numbers are really getting higher in the high school levels, particularly 11th and 12th grade of, of reporting that their peers have increased their use of marijuana during COVID. And I think that's all of my slides. If anybody has any questions.
Caitlin, if I might, Mr. Chair. You, when we talked about this survey, it's done by Kelly Research and Associates, and it's a research-based test. And what your plan to do, what you plan to do with the results, and I know that some of it is for grant writing, et cetera, et cetera, but in terms of the value that we can take from this from a school system's point of view, are there takeaways? Are there risk factors that can be identified with some of these results? And if so, what form does that take? And how does that get translated? And how does that get communicated back to the appropriate personnel in the school system?
Yeah, that's a great question. I know, you know, we're at the phases of just sharing the, the data results back with the, the school committee and, and the community at large. So thinking about, you know, are there ways we can work with folks at the school level potentially who would be able to help us maybe identify the risk factors? The survey itself just asks for like self-report of, you know, use, peer use, parental approval, disapproval. But I think there's definitely ways that we can, you know, dig into that data and see how we can, you know, whether provide more protective factors and be able to really combat some of these. You know, these data points, I think is huge, particularly with COVID. I know we've been doing more presentations on like emotional health, coping skills, things like that, to help build some of those protective factors because, you know, research shows us that most people use, who, you know, young people who are using are self-medicating. So thinking about if, if that's the case in Middleborough, how can we support a more holistic approach to support students in their mental health? And being, you know, more communicative on that end with our campaigns and our reach and things like that. But in terms of, you know, really, we, we do want to support the community and thinking about ways we can do that. We're still in the early phases of, you know, we have the data back now, so thinking about what we can do with that. We're definitely open to how we can support the community with that.
Does Kelly Research provide suggestions or identify risk, risk factors when this, this data comes in to them?
I don't think so, just because of how the questions are written. I don't know if they would be able to do that kind of analysis, but I can definitely reach out.
All right. And the final question I have before it opens up to the school committee is, obviously, with grade six, there's 163 students that participated. We have about 220 students in grade six last year. So that seems to me a good reliable number. But when you look at the senior class, there were 81 respondents, and we had about 215 or 220 kids in the senior class. Is that information less reliable or equally as reliable or less reliable as those numbers get fewer?
That's a great question. I mean, the more representative sample we have, I mean, typically the more reliable they are. But I can definitely check in with our research team and see if they have any recommendations on, you know, kind of the, the class size and how reliable the data is.
Okay. Thank you, Caitlin. I can turn it over to the chair and, and the committee.
Caitlin, one other thing too, which is, Middleborough Matters has done this survey since I've been around and you've been around. Part of the, the problem is that this survey is really two years old, if you will, because we don't have, we weren't able to do it in 2019. And so it's sort of, it's jumping ahead two years rather than seeing a progression as you have in the past surveys, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
Other questions? Megan, go ahead.
So there's a question online. They were just asking if the surveys were saying that these students stated using these, using these items or that they use them more than usual. So if you could just clarify that.
For the increase during COVID would be more than usual, and then the other questions are, you know, in general use. So there's past 30-day use, and then the recept, so in the past month if they have used is how that one is reported.
Thank you.
Yep.
Rich, go ahead. Yeah, so I guess my first question would be, is there a possibility to find out how Middleborough stacks up to other communities that Kelly Research has, has maybe done this survey in, so we can figure out if there's something unique here, either positive or negative? Or if we mirror kind of the baseline for kids this age? Do you know if that, that data can be available to us?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't see why not, and I will bring that back to the research team.
Excellent, thanks. I did have another one, but if someone else wants to jump in.
No, no, please.
I was also wondering if we could, maybe next time you present, get sort of a comparison of year to year? I think that would help us kind of see trends a little bit better as well.
Yes, yes, that's a good point. I know we weren't able to do it the previous school year, so definitely can, can look into getting some more progressive data on that as well.
Thank you.
So it may, might make sense that, for those questions, you know, like January or something like that, so we can bring everything together and answer the questions that way, and so compare and contrast. I think that would be very interesting.
Definitely.
But given the, it seemed like the committee wanted to hear the results of the survey when we were putting it out. We wanted to make sure that everyone knew when we had it. Go ahead, Rich.
Unless you have one? No? Okay. I was curious if you had any thoughts on that. I was watching the, the difference between middle school perception of risk and middle school peer disapproval. What's kind of interesting about that is that perception of risk rises as grade level rises on the middle school perception of risk category. But then what's interesting is actually the reverse happens on middle school peer disapproval. It actually lowers as grade level rises. And I was just curious if you, I know it's not asking the exact same question, so it's not, it's not contradicting in any way, but I was just curious if you had any thoughts on why the more people perceive, the more kids perceive risk as they rise through, through the grades of middle school, the less they think their peers disapprove of it? I just thought that was an interesting point. I'm curious about that.
Yeah, so the, the perception of risk from the middle school in comparison to the peer disapproval at the middle school?
Yeah. You can see that stair-step shape on the perception of risk is opposite, heading downstairs in, in peer disapproval.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think, I personally think it lowers just due to the nature of, of peer pressure as students get older.
Interesting.
So that, that was my take on it when I first read the data points. And then, you know, the perception of risk is, you know, thinking, you know, at that personal level, does this harm my health? I think a lot of students really look to their peers and what their peers think. So I think that's a really huge component of, of, you know, how folks might answer. So definitely, yeah, peer pressure comes to mind for me.
Cool. And Mr. Chair, just to add on to that, that seems like a really awesome opportunity right there. That almost tells you a little bit about the psyche, that as, as they become more aware that it's risky, it seems like their peers are maybe pushing a little bit more. And that's almost like a real And that's almost like a really nice target, how to, how to influence that peer pressure type thing. I'm sure that's like 100 years worth of, of, you know, drug, anti-drug campaigns, but I just thought that was interesting. And then if it's okay, I just have one last question. For, it, it's kind of a two-parter, but confidentiality and opting out. So how, I'm assuming no names are put on these when students fill these out? Are they being watched in any way when they're filling them out, like by a teacher or anything like that?
No, there is definitely confidentiality and an opt-out. Parents can fill out a, you know, opt-out form for their student, and the, there shouldn't be anybody, you know, watching or anything like that. This was conducted online this year due to remote, this past school year due to the remote schooling. However, is really, the students are filling it out at their own, their own pace. I believe it was set during homeroom for the most part, so students had, you know, didn't have a conflict during classes or anything like that, so had some time to just work on it, and that was what they were focused on during that time.
Got it. And how, and how does the opt-out piece work? Parents notified like when they're going to go out and the parent can say yes or no? Or is it like beginning of year type thing, like, no, I don't want my kid doing that?
So how we did it for this past survey was when we knew that when the survey was going out, a form was available for parents to opt their student out.
Okay, so it was like default opt-in, and if they filled out the form, they opted out? I guess that's the nature of opt-out, but that's how it was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I got.
Other question? I actually have one question for Superintendent. Given the information that we have, how do we convey that information to parents more broadly than just the school committee meeting? You know what I mean?
I think that it might not be, it would probably be a good idea to post this on the website, if that's okay with the committee, if that's the pleasure of the committee. I think that's perfectly appropriate. These are our results, good, bad, or indifferent. And I, and I think that people, in the interest of transparency, should be able to see this. And I think that that's a good idea to start with, but I think this data is fresh, it's new. It's going to go through the committee, it's going to be analyzed further by the committee, and hopefully Kelly Research has some suggestions perhaps, looking at the data based on the results, and they can make some suggestions to us in terms of what we can do as a school system. And I think, thus my question, I think earlier to Caitlin, is let's, let's look at this data in terms of a school system and what we can do as a school system, and, and put this through the social-emotional formula and, and the medical formula and everything else, and try to maybe address some need, if there's some need that's identified here, some risk factors, as I, I mentioned that term earlier. But that's what this is all about, I think, is to identify risk factors and then provide services to address those risk factors, so.
Thank you for coming tonight, Caitlin. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Caitlin.
Mr. Sullivan, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. If I understand, when the chairman indicated that this survey has been used in the past?
Yes, Middleborough Matters has put out surveys.
Had done a survey two years ago. The problem was the results became skewed, the results never got to the school committee. And that's, that was an issue with this, with the last test.
I guess I misunderstood. I thought you said, since you two have been together, you have been doing the survey. So this is only the second or third time we've had it?
Yeah. You know, the, what had happened.
My point was, if we've used it before, it might be helpful for the community to hear, what do we use the results and how do we use the results? Did it help with programming? Did it help with staffing? So that was on my only question. Thank you.
Good point, especially with the same test, Dr. Sullivan. Okay, moving on. The next in your packet is the annual report for the Regional Educational Assessment and Diagnostic Services Collaborative, which is otherwise known as the REEDS Collaborative, which happens to be housed here in Middleborough on Grove Street and also at the Rotary. They've opened up a new building. I happen to be a member, as you do. You appoint me to that member, that board each year. I'm a member of the Board of Directors. It's an active group. It's a group that has a high attendance level at all meetings, monthly meetings. And we provide direction for Teresa Craig, who's the executive director. And she and her folks put this annual program report together. I would ask, from my point of view, it's, it's a healthy document, that you review it, and if you have any questions, send them to me in email form. I can get them to Dr. Craig if I can't answer them myself. And she has also offered to be present at a meeting if we want a further description of the services that REEDS provides. They're, they're a very helpful collaborative, and, and we utilize them for a number of services with regard to some lesser restrictive environments that we're able to access, deaf and hard of hearing program, and a number of other services that they provide. So that's in your packet. If you have any questions on that, we can certainly address them through the executive director, Teresa Craig. Okay, if there's no questions or any further questions on that, I can turn it over to Sarah, who's going to, Ms. Sarah Aiki, Director of Finance, Business and Finance, who's going to talk about minimum wage increases.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch, and thank you, school committee members. I come to you at this time every year, and we talk about how the state is increasing minimum wage as of January 1st. So January 1st, 2022, the minimum wage will increase to $14.25 an hour. We will be paying our recess monitors, substitute custodians, substitute cafeteria workers and student employees, the $14.25 an hour. And as we have discussed in the past, we try to pay certain positions above minimum wage. So we're proposing an increase, this was in your packets online, proposing an increase for the substitutes without a four-year degree to increase to $15.50 an hour, the substitutes with a four-year degree to $16 an hour, a certified substitute with a valid Department of Elementary and Secondary Education license to $17 an hour, and a certified retired Middleborough teacher with a valid license to $18.50 an hour. Substitute educational support personnel would increase to $14.50. Are there any questions about this proposed rate increase?
I guess just the only question is, the, the increases that you planned for the, for those certain positions that were above, it just mirrors the same range that we used to have, it just bumped up that extra amount, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chair, I need to take a motion to approve the increases. Do I hear a second? Discussion. I would like to point out that as amazing as this may seem, moving to minimum wage is not a requirement of municipalities.
Yes.
That's why the school committee has to vote it each year. It obviously doesn't make sense for us to have positions below minimum wage, and it makes sense to continue to bump as it goes. And so that's why we do that. So any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks for that, Sarah.
Thank you.
May I complete my report, Mr.? Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent before I move on? I should point out that we are, the, the building project is still going.
We're, we're, we're currently in phase six, and we will hopefully, I saw a bunch of fencing leaving today, which was great, and we're opening up the front of the building as of Monday. The parking lot should be painted tomorrow and Saturday, weather permitting, and we should have full use of that front parking lot as of Monday morning. With new traffic patterns that are going to be communicated out through the high school administration and, and sent out, and hopefully that will alleviate some of the bottlenecking that's going on in both areas of Wood Street and East Grove and, and West Grove, excuse me, and then, East Grove. And then we could get the, the normal pattern and see how we, we develop. That front parking lot, I believe, is 266 or 268 spaces in that front lot that will be added. Unfortunately, in the spring, we'll lose the back area, which is where we're parking now behind the gym, which will be tennis courts and a basketball court. And then over in the back, the dirt parking lot will become additional grass fields for additional play, football practice area, lacrosse area in the spring, and extended soccer area also, so. And we'll obviously have the multipurpose field for multiple sports, but in terms of practices, they'll be practicing elsewhere, so.
And I should also point out that the project is still under budget.
Project is still under budget, that's correct, Mr. Chair. It's not on time, but it's under budget.
Rich, go ahead.
Just a question through you to Mr. Lynch. I remember we were talking a little bit about the, the access to the track and all that, and like the main piece was that it technically wasn't done yet, and it wasn't even really ours. Is, when that parking lot finishes, is that going to be officially over?
The last piece to this, as I've mentioned before, is, is the cameras that are in that area, and they've just pulled wires for those on Tuesday, so we're hoping that those security cameras will be online. And that's really the last piece, is to have those security cameras up.
Great.
Because our insurance would need those cameras to, to make sure that if something does go on, we have a video record of it.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Other question? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Just so everyone understands, the consent agenda includes meeting minutes, fundraiser for the Nichols School for Veterans Outreach, and a fundraiser for the high school class at 2024, which is a charity drive for St. Vincent de Paul.
Just under discussion, it's okay. I just wanted to, I, I always read through these and just wanted to say it out loud how excellent the minutes are and the level of detail that is in, is better than most other minutes I've ever seen. So I just wanted to thank Christine for all the awesome work that she does. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. That concludes our meeting for tonight. Like I said, we started early tonight because we were dealing with a grievance. Our next school committee meeting will be Thursday, December 16th, and we will see you there then. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.